Okay, Ron. Everyone, welcome, everyone. The council meeting. The consideration for approved events.
The hold.
Nonna and Paul. No further discussion. In favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Any good for you? Four zero one, got to stand, thank you. How was the trip? Any fish?
No.
You just don't want to share with us?
No, I didn't give you.
Consent items five A through C. Any questions?
Come on.
Paul. Mike, any further discussion? All in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Questions, unanimous? Licenses and permits, eleven A. Go for quick, pick this taxi. Run him. How you doing?
Doing good, sir.
Yeah, welcome. Like to have a taxi service? Maybe explain a little bit about it if you would, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm near the same James. And I realized you guys don't have a taxi service. And I realized your transit services, you guys do have in town, closes at early in the evening. And I was gonna offer my taxi services throughout the day. And evening, whenever someone needed a ride anywhere, medical runs or vice versa, wherever they needed to go.
And you have the vehicle?
Yes, I do.
And everything is here in the application except the insurance. So, are you working on it?
I am working on that currently, yes. The guy I spoke, I spoke with my agent today. And he said he's working on getting everything back over in the morning.
Will you be on a twenty-four hour call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next one. Who does this sure?
That is my mother. And she is also my tax agent and secretary.
Welcome. Renee?
Green Walker.
How you doing? Also done any questions?
Thank you all, I'm hard work.
Anything else you wanna add?
No. Not currently, no.
Okay. No solutions? Subject to the insurance if you decide to approve. Don?
Sir.
Nonna, any further discussion? Anything you wanna add?
No, sir.
All in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Questions, unanimous? Subject to getting we have the insurance. Should be good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, welcome to Sam James. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, we'll jump down to thirteen A. Saint James BSW requests a modified by ordinance stating without drop patio required. Richard, great.
Great. I don't think Rich is gonna come on.
He might.
We would like to put a patio in the front of our building for the hunters. We request a variance for, they have a steel wall. Corrugated steel wall on the west side of it. And the south and the east side would be a lot of air. With spring on the insides, obviously compressed and it's technical.
We're looking solid to the west of the snow, right?
With snow and wind.
Okay.
And then it also has a roof.
Okay, what's the roof?
Right. What's the roof? That'll be sealed. All sealed similar to their overhead and etc. on the front of the building right now.
Okay.
When you say corrugated steel, what does that look like?
No, just. Yeah.
That ripple effect?
Yeah.
And that'll be the same color as the roof?
Probably, yeah.
Are there any question?
Just need my small table only, or there be, be able to eat and drink there too?
Yes, we've got tables out there.
Alright.
It's, yeah, it's for any custom that would like to lock it.
In the package, when we were talking about the variance that they were gonna require. They mentioned they were moving the dumpsters to the east side. And we're gonna require them to fence that slab and fence it in. I don't have a problem, those guys are gonna do it on their own. But I don't think we as a city should be telling them that they have to do this. Uh, I don't think we wanna be doing that, you know, going and picking on any one location. So, hey, you gotta, you gotta concrete that and fence it in. They wanna do that themselves, which I think they said they were gonna do.
I don't know anything about that at all.
So, it was in, it was in the pack here, so.
Well, we have, we do that with the dollar store and other places where they had the dumpsters that were gonna be in different locations. We have to set up a structure with the gate, etc., so the dumpsters weren't visible? Or is that because of location?
Okay, go to the, the new Mexican restaurant now. They own, they own the property behind there. Are we gonna have to fence that in?
Was it just because of location when we talked about that at the dollar store?
I think it was part of the ordinance.
But the, the, they just had dumpsters out there for how long? And how we're gonna tell them they gotta, they gotta.
For new construction, it's in the ordinance. But we're not really not necessarily.
But I guess I don't wanna be, I don't think the city should be the one that's dictating that, that.
I understand, I understand from Nonna that it's in, for building mood. But it's not for existing, as Don is asking for. So, the, so, the only question that you guys are asking for tonight is just for a modification from a vinyl fence to wrought iron and corrugated steel.
Wrought iron is allowed. Maybe modification might be for the corrugated steel.
Says here for vinyl fence to wrought iron fence in the south and east and corrugated steel in the rest. Yes, cuz you, you as a council then would be acting on without anything regarding the dumpster or fence or anything like that that Don brought up, that's not part of this.
We would probably be moving in cuz we obviously have a definite schedule.
And that would be up to you, to your post.
Yeah, what you do is that would be up to you, I mean, I'll.
So, council wishes.
So, we're changing, the, the, the request has changed from vinyl to wrought iron?
Wrought, the ordinance reads that they can have wrought iron, a stone, uh, material. But, and they originally came in wanting vinyl. So, the modification would have been approving the vinyl. They've since changed that to wrought iron. So, you're giving them a modification to put the one wall in as corrugated steel.
Second to Josh's, uh, question?
Second, if that's agreed.
Any further discussion? Anything you wanna add, Rich? Anything you wanna add, Rich?
No.
All in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Questions, unanimous? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to Olden Street or Ramp Removal Construction, so they, you know. We received two bids on the actual ramp itself. One from C A B Construction on Mankato. For a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then the Joseph Company for two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Alternates for C A B was nine hundred and sixty-two. The Joseph Company was three thousand dollars. So, that completes the entire package. And we're looking at a project cost of approximately two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Broken down into general conditions. The existing conditions, which is a demo, the current ramp and excavation for footings. Which is roadways construction for total of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. Concrete work by Wilcon Construction, thirty-two thousand, two hundred. Masonry was included with the concrete work. And then the ramp itself, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two fifty-one. Which is the roadways, the street department. That's gonna be our recommendation. And the reason for that is we had anticipated that the cost of the ramp would be a hundred thousand dollars. So, we're fifty-seven thousand dollars over that. So, we can cut some of the costs by the street department not doing some other work that they would have scheduled to do this fall. And in place, they would end up doing the demolition and excavation.
Is this the only part of that that the city can do?
What was that now?
The, uh, doing away with the roadways bid. Is that the only part of this revamping that the city can do?
You can do this, alright?
I, I feel very comfortable with the crew. I've got the equipment we've got, we can tear it down.
Okay.
Have, have we got an idea what that's gonna cost us now?
I'm figuring three days. And I haven't put a pencil to it, no I haven't. But I'm figuring three days, so.
No, I got a call from Roadways last week and wanted to talk to you till we were in route. So, I, I'm sure they're gonna be calling on this.
They have called and talked to me, Bob. And my found that is we do have, council does have a fiduciary responsibility.
Well, that's the reason I'm asking that. This is the, the only part of this operation that we can farm out or sell at time.
We had a little discussion about giving some of the general conditions.
Right. There are some things on the general conditions that, uh, we probably don't need. And so, how do you want to prove this and you take out what you don't think you need? Or how do you, what do you?
Do you have the ability to do that?
We are the owner, we can do that. Right, no, I will be sitting down with Joe when we call, but suppose I didn't.
Joe, what's you wanna?
This entire project has been a real challenge for Wilcon. When we received estimates for the project. None of the individual companies that gave us estimates given bid on any of it. So, Joe had to go out and try and solicit additional.
Everybody's backed up? They busy or what, Joe? We didn't wanna take it, or?
Um, lots of had to do with schedule.
Cause of our time frame?
Yeah. The timeframe that we wanted to, to deal with probably gone was starting in the first part of September. And then hopefully be completed by the end of September. Give it take, you know, within a couple of weeks after that. Biggest of, slash lives. And then right now, there's a lot of contractors that just have busy bidding schedules. Speaking of just didn't have time to even look at it. Doesn't mean that they wanna try and do it, but they just didn't have time, right now. Several contractors, I mean, we've only been the first time around.
Wanting to make a difference? Thank you.
First time around when we bid, um, one of the companies I'd gotten to was, um, similar contractors in the last week was, it was just more than what they really wanted to take on or could understand. And the set of plans, and I'm just not used to looking at a set of grants or subspects that was put off this project. It's, it's, it's kind of a complicated project in a way. And it's more than what a lot of them wanted to take on. And so, the responsibility rests. And that's where I lost sight of you, local contractors, that one too.
And you got a plan to stay, stay up?
I have a whole set of plans back here if anybody wants to look at it afterwards. What you guys saw last night, or the first time we met about this was Mary, so we're, we're just a systematic schedule. But this is the full plans, um, that we've been on, on. Shows you a lot of the detail of what's going on.
And you'll stay up to?
Yeah, yeah, I'll stick along for all the other questions.
Any else got any questions, Adrian?
One of the general, um, conditions we're looking at, the one or two, I mean.
What I was seeing there?
I marked them off, if you want to move it.
You go ahead.
Okay. The telephone, the toilet, the project sign, temporary barricades. We've got two, two restrooms right in the building here that can be used.
Okay, the telephone can be used, or people use their own cell phone.
Cell phone, yeah.
Okay. A lot of those try to use their cell phone like that. That's for our company, that's what, um, our form which says is, you know, cover the cost of using a phone. So, that's trying to do something there.
So, you typically have that?
Typically, we have a call, it's in the project. Yep.
So, it's about seventeen hundred bucks?
A little bit else.
Not complaining, just giving, everybody should be knowing the number.
We don't have this big, and we'll spend all of the contingency also. There's nine thousand dollars. We're also gonna be carrying into an existing building. So, we just have to leave that. This one coming from? Our recommendation is we take the hundred thousand from the gap improvement fund and the balance we've been working with. Yeah, but from the winter's dollar. We have a better fund there, probably, ultimately, in both, in both of those companies.
Any questions?
So, if we're not gonna take temporary barricades, what are we gonna do? Street department has barricades.
The barricades that happened is what Joe was at the top of, um, the ramp and we will be there itself. And you guys can certainly do this, that's fine. But you're gonna wanna put, what do you have planned on doing this?
Chaining fronts.
Well, just putting a solid file in the middle is to limit into the opening. There's no chance of somebody walking through the theater and accident opening that would you want to call this. On the outside, that's typically left up to the workers excavating at the time. Make the very paper, the care of their own maintenance stations.
And we've already had a discussion like the savings alone, and they're willing to cooperate with us regardless to shutting down the driveway during those days and carry it down next year.
Question, Nonna, is there a second?
Sir.
Uh, any further discussion or anything you wanna add?
No, no.
Say your prints after the meeting, anybody can look at them, then you go. Okay, no other discussion, all in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Questions, unanimous? Next, for September?
Yeah, that's great, September.
September, right?
That's what we're planning on right now.
Okay.
None of the demolition will start on project until they have the entire ramp setting back in the parking lot, ready for the construction.
Thirteen B Resolution Setting Piece for Septic and Leachate.
In the past, the city has had a resolution charging for Septic at twenty-five dollars a thousand gallons. Leachate is at forty dollars a thousand gallons. But proposing an administrative fee annually of a hundred dollars, which would cover any of the testing requirements that you have to take to make sure we're properly treating that leachate once it comes in and also. And, um, we checked with other communities in the area and our Septic charges are significantly under what they should be. So, what we get was came up with an average of fifty-five dollars.
Plus the permit?
Plus the permit.
I was just gonna say.
This will offend outsiders that come in that pump out Septic tanks for farmers in the area. Uh, there's a couple of individuals in the area that run out of quarter potties. And they will be bringing sewage, sewage into our plant. As you get the pumpers of the Septic system, which is correct. It's gonna be fifty-five dollars per cell.
Great, great.
Plus the annual fee. Yes.
This is in resolution form? Put them, the Septic, to understand that leachate, where they.
Leachate comes from garbage. Uh, we get some from Cottonwood County on a, on a regular basis now. And see, what, what we were doing with, with Cottonwood County was we were hauling our sludge to Cottonwood County in exchange for them giving us the leachate. Well, now that we are pressing and hauling our sludge out to a farmer, we're no longer doing a trade-off. So, they're paying us the, uh, forty, forty dollars a thousand gallon.
I'm not quite a bit?
Just, I'd have to, I'd have to look it up.
But that's the only place where you check on your cottonwood?
That's correct, yes.
What is the leachate layer that comes off of the landfill we've got out east of town? I think it's a bit smaller, isn't it?
No.
It's sealed.
That, that one seal, the only thing that's coming off of that right now is probably some methan is in it.
So, that, it's only inactive landfill that this leachate comes over?
Right.
And once they seal them, there's no drainage anymore?
No. I mean, they're all play aligned anyway.
If the seal needs to stay inside this single, whatever it is. Further discussion? Not all in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Paul? Excuse me. Uh, back up, all in favor, sing if I was showing hands? Uh, four and a half.
Wait, what, this? You said it's fifty-five dollars refund? Leachate in Septic, right?
No, leachate is forty.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we've entered into a contract with Cottonwood County. We're leaving that at forty-one percent.
So, it's still about fifty-five refund. So, it's just the Septic.
Right, correct.
Show of hands?
Yeah.
Five zero. Okay, John.
When was the last time the water tower was cleaned bottom?
Two years.
I think, I don't know what it cost to clean it, but I, what's it cost to clean? What would it cost us last time to clean that?
I'm in the neighborhood of, uh, I thought it was four, four thousand. But the next closest bid was eighteen thousand. It's terrible. I do have it in for next year's budget.
Painting or painting?
Cleaning.
Painting.
Painting will be in a couple of years. Just so you know, there are some issues on the tower. It is starting to peel and starting to rust.
What's the estimate to paint it, do you think?
A hundred and eighty-five thousand right now. Depending upon what color.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be likely like last time, but I wouldn't do.
If we just painted a whole tower, we don't have to worry about whole painting.
Oh, we'll paint that thing. The, the process from mine, I think that that bottom part's gotta be painted dark. Other, I mean, that, that's terrible. Terrible.
Think it's more for you, Joe, more?
How long's Butterfield had their water tower over there?
Two thousand and one.
How come their looks so clean? Ours looks dirty.
I don't know, you have to ask them. What color is it?
White.
It's, it's not as big a spiroid as what we have. Ours, the water comes down, sits there. There's a smaller, and basically can run away quicker. Go stand underneath of it on a hot humid day and you get a show of it.
Right, I mean, the condition of things in it was terrible.
I, I don't argue that, that will be coming in for a paint job in the next couple of years. I don't know what to tell you, how long we can push it off.
Well, we need to do, we need to do it. We got some money in reserve for the water.
If we're gonna paint it a couple of years, I don't think we should be looking at cleaning it again.
We got.
But, no, I just throw money out the window.
We, we should have money in reserve, Don.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if, if we don't wanna push it off and clean it, if we're gonna paint it.
Right. Did they ever say like what color, like painted blue or did something that's not white that would not show so bad?
Our recommendation was the blue color.
Okay. And who was on the council?
Well, it took, how long did it take to figure out come to white?
I didn't come to meetings, but I know Bob said that was about, uh, two months.
Yeah. Uh, I've been on four meetings. They decided on the, the size and the, and the design quicker than it did to decide the color.
We should be able to figure the color out in an hour, don't you think?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if it came up now, you don't think that we could, you think it takes four meetings to figure out a color?
Well, no, not now because we know what the problem is.
Okay, alright.
Nobody knew that if it was a light color, you're gonna have this problem, you know, problem all the time.
Why don't we do budgeting in July and August? Who's gonna budget? Paul and Mike? Then we look at, Mark, keeping just this process, so that maybe, at least we can make one.
I, I do have bids from a year, year and a half ago.
Okay. Maybe just call it, maybe just get us, so we know if it's still being listed? Okay.
Okay.
Alright, that'd be good. Some budgets coming up into this one, August, right, Joe? There's September fourteenth, by the way.
Actually, we have twenty-three.
Twenty-nine.
They changed, huh?
Okay.
But we're not going to change that, are we?
Anything else, Tom?
Yeah.
Paul, Steve, no. Uh, two things. Bobby, our yesterday, we lost one on our folks that came to his day lot and passed away. So, it's simply to be in his, to his family, excuse me. He was always, came to every, almost every, uh, coffee hour that we had. Molly talked about the grant for the demolition of the, of the Bull Hospital. From, uh, D, excuse me, Department of Economics period. And the application is in, has to be in prior to August first, and will be. There's some rumors floating around, and we said we don't have direct rumors. We're just real things that are fact, not fictional. Lot price industrial park were discussed. We'll be discussing that at the E D A meeting, our next E D A meeting. And then we have recommendations back to council for that. Uh, television promotional ads about the community were discussed on K E Y C T V. There's like thirty second slots. We can address our residential lots or industrial lots of just our community. Molly's gonna look into that, see a cost. We're going into the council for, uh, you to dis, uh, at least discuss. Increases and damages of property boards were discussed. Residents are encouraged to contact the police department if they see suspicious activity in the neighborhood. Masking all, it's been in the Macato paper, it's been on TV. So, please lock your cars. And if you see somebody around the neighborhood, call the police so they can get the concert in partners. This Thursday, in what Atlanta?
It's at seven o'clock. It is Jazz Central. And Wellspring is during the ice cream social.
Very good. Norory Chamber School Foundation Golf Tournament is tomorrow. And, uh, thanks to Linda for the first chocolate cookies and the straight cat for the coffee. And also, please remember in your prayers, Mark Sturm's, uh, sister's husband passed away, Steve, yesterday, Mark. Maxine, uh, Mark's sister, Maxine, her husband. So, our thoughts and prayers, if you please extend that to your sister, Mark, when you go there, to the funeral as well. Uh, that's it. Yeah. Mike?
There's a pot hole in front of the school on that road. I think it'll be.
Before school starts. Promise?
I promise.
Do you think you're backed up? Or we'll just go the way?
We're still backed up, trying to get ready for Sioux Falls.
And that is?
It's the third week of August. So, and we're doing the southeast former town.
Which is the biggest fork.
Yep. Also, if you see somebody at the welcome signs in town, on, on the four corners of town, we are having gold painted. So, there will be somebody there sanding and painting and they will, by the end of the year, they should look, by fall, they should look nice and sharp.
Are they need a landscaping too?
There'll be some landscaping done, yes.
Well, for sure, rock. And they haven't decided yet if there'd be anything more of it. There might be less that shows up, the stars above ground, but maybe other landscaping. Is it rock or wood?
Rock.
Okay. Anything else, Ray? Well, Mark?
Just update you on the water meter installation. We're approximately fifty percent done. Um, this week, there's four individuals installing meters, so let's move it along a little quicker. Next week, we'll be down to one and two guys as they switch their schedules and move people around. But really, again, appreciate all the, um, cooperation from the citizens. It's, it's been fantastic. It's really going good.
We put a card in our door today, she must be off the ones we haven't done to call.
Correct. Uh, some have gotten their first letter, some have gotten their second letter, some have gotten their third letter. After the third letter, then we'll be doing a little more visiting with them. After the third letter, then we'll be doing a little more visiting with them.
Well, I guess, Mark, I've, I've talked to you a couple of times on this.
And, uh, an update on that, Don, is they were overwhelmed.
Update on what?
On the website. They were overwhelmed, he told me, uh, Monday that he had updated it, that it should be fit.
It's available now to win, set up an appointment.
That's what he told me. I apologize, didn't get back yet.
We're getting these letters, we're in the second letter, and I went online, and the first time I went online, they're going, two days have had any openings. Didn't fit my schedule. The next time I went online, they said, we're not scheduling it, so, you know, taking issue with time, that's when I went in and talked to Mark.
Correct.
I said, here's kinda your, your try and schedule appointment, if you can, and they're sending you a letter saying, hey.
The letters are automatically generated, uh, Alex has been backed up and had been gone for, uh, family. And when he, he told me Monday that he had updated it all, so it should be ready to go now.
And it, these people should know that that's not, so the city's sending those letters out.
No, the city is not, it's, it's sent out by Ferguson Company, they're an automatically generated letter that they send out. Um, we've had, you know, our, the normal problems, but it's, it's been working good. People have been calling in, and they're booked solid for the next two weeks, basically. They do have a couple openings here and there, but, uh, do encourage everybody to call in as soon as possible, the quicker you call in, the sooner you can, uh, get your timeframe in that works for you.
Any else?
No.
Linda?
The movie this weekend is tanning, it's rated R.
Did you, I mean, do you want anything more to talk about the signs and that, we have stuff, most people have stuff before we, but I don't know. Adam? Hey, motion to adjourn, um, thank you for attending, and good luck on the taxes, um. Josh and Mike, thank you for attending, have a good night.